Smith.
Hello.
No, no, no.
It's, it's.
Yeah. I only got you.
I had to pay bear.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let me get this here. All right, welcome, everybody. Appreciate you standing by while we had that delay, but we're going to go ahead and start the meeting. I'll call the meeting to order, and roll call, please, Ruth.
Morris. Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins. McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. All right, pledge of allegiance. How about one of the Patel's? Would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight, if you don't mind?
Just start the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, Mr.
All right, at this time, I would take a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Larson.
Aye.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Aye.
Six yes.
Awesome. We, the agenda is approved. Public participation? I didn't see anything, Ruth. Okay. Presentations, we have none. Appointments, we have none. So that'll move us on to the consent agenda. I would take a motion to either approve or modify the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Favor. Discussion? Alderman Smith.
I'm still concerned about we're missing the minutes from June 28th and July 12th of this year. If I'm correct, we're 30 days past due on those, not the July 12th, but the June 28th. I'm a little concerned. This has happened before, back in 2010, 11. I think we had some serious issues back then, and minutes were not posted for six months. When can we expect those?
So I did reach out to City Clerk Cohen and asked for clarification on that. I have not received clarification on when we will receive the updated minutes. He has corresponded to me with, with me on a separate matter, but I do not have an update at this point. And I do appreciate your concern, because it is my understanding that we are in violation with the state of Illinois on that. And, yeah. Yes, sir.
For the city attorney, John, are we, is there any issues with that, as us as council members?
What's your primary concern? Yes, under the Open Meetings Act, you are supposed to have the minutes approved in 30 days.
Does that affect any of us, you know, sitting on council? I mean, are there any repercussions against us?
No, no. If, if anything, if it continues and gets worse, and someone complains, you probably get a letter. It's, it's not like anything is going to be charged against you, or you're not going to end up in any criminal or civil liability or anything, no.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
But it is a concern. I mean, the, the minutes are our story of our council meetings, and we do need to have those completed, and we do need to have those correct and submitted and approved by council. So I'll reach out with, to the city clerk again, to see about clarification on when we can expect the two meeting minutes that are not currently approved by council. Thank you, Alderman Smith. So, we had a motion, we had a second, we had discussion. Sorry, Alderman Favor.
Do you have to read through all the?
You're right, I do. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
And thank you for pointing it out, instead of Alderman Smith over there. All right, so the consent agenda is minutes of the Joint Review Board of April 23rd, 2021, minutes of the regular city council meeting of July 26th, 2021, and then accounts payable and payroll through August 9th, 2021, in the amount of $1,427,456.85. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six yes.
All right, the consent agenda passes. Public hearings, we have none. So considerations, agenda number, or agenda letter I, item number one, consideration of a civilian police review board proposal. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I was thinking, when we were saying the pledge, there's a very important phrase in that that we've all known since we were little, and that's with liberty and justice for all. And, you know, we, this, this country's been in, in pursuit of the, the right way to assure that to everybody for 250 years. In the last year, take us back to the more recent past, our, our community and the country as a whole has been working, I think, a lot more energetically in that direction than we have for a long time. And here in our community, we have looked at ways to make our, our police department, in particular, an agency that is better known to our community, where bridges are built between the department and, and the people they serve. And we have had some very frank and constructive conversations, and we have looked at internal procedures, we've looked at how people are, are treated, and, and how we are more accountable, can be more accountable, more transparent. And in the background for your agenda tonight, I identified some ways in particular that I think this council has stepped up and been, I think, at, at the, the head of the curve on, on a lot of internal changes and adjustments. But one thing that we haven't talked about in this room, but we've had a lot of conversation within the community about, in small groups, some formal, some informal, and that is whether we want to embrace a civilian police review board. And so it comes to you tonight as a, a draft for your preliminary discussion or review and, and direction. And I, I want to say, as I've, I've given you some lengthy background, that what we're looking at, the kinds of topics that might come before this review board would be actions taken by our, our police officers, and the board, as, as proposed here, would be in a position after there's been an investigation. Should I continue, or should I wait? I'll continue. I don't know if there's going to be a direction or not. So what we're talking about is, what are the, what's the authority of the board? What's the structure of the board? And how is it going to tie together some of these discussions we've been having over the last year? So what's proposed here is something that's grown out of a lot of conversations. Chief Byrd, in the 90 days that he's been here, has been involved in a lot of those. We've touched a number of community groups and leaders. Our FOP Lodge 115 has been very much involved in this conversation internally and otherwise. Other law enforcement leaders have weighed in for their communities, and, and we've engaged them in conversation around the country. Local social justice activists who have been active with us in this community and defining how we want to feel like we belong here in this community have, have touched on this. And our Human Relations Commission, as recently as last week, looked at this formal proposal that you have and, and supported it with some suggestions to you in terms of how to vet the, the persons who might be interested in this, and the timing of meetings and so forth. I generally like the concept and the model. So this is your first time to, to look at it. I want to say that we're, we're not cutting new ground. There's, as I say in the background, since 1995, there's been an association that is very much focused on civilian oversight of law enforcement. They're not law enforcement rooted. And there's, there are in the hundreds models out there, there are in the thousands, almost 20,000 agencies that are, are law enforcement agencies. So we're, we're not the first, and, but we are still among a relatively small batch of communities that are wrestling with this, and I'm, I'm proud of that. I'm glad we are. So what we're looking for is, what, what's the focus of, of their business? One would be what is typically the focus of all the civilian review boards that I've seen and read about, and that's use of force. What are the protocols? What are the policies? Are we following them? What is the training for new officers? What's the training for continuing employees who are in a law enforcement role? And when I say use of force, I'm not just talking about service weapons, I'm talking about everything from the hands to, to batons and ASP and tasers and various kinds of cap stun spray and so forth, and what the rules of conduct are. So that, that's one area. And the other area is, is going to be people who, who want to raise concerns about what they think is a pattern of, of enforcement that they don't feel comfortable with, or, or just to register concerns about whether they think there's been some biased enforcement of, of certain of our municipal code ordinances or, or state statutes. So what is the structure that's proposed? And I'll just run through it very quickly, and Chief Byrd has made his entry, and.
We'll, we'll give him a minute to get settled, Chief. Take your time, take your time, no hurry. You betcha.
Do you like how I've been kind of stretching this?
You're masterful.
So the, the structure, I, I hope you've had a chance to review this. It's, it starts on page four in your background. What has been proposed here, and what the Human Relations Commission looked at last week, was the, the structure of five civilian members that would be nominated by the mayor, approved by the city council, not by the mayor, not by the police chief, not by the city manager. And, and the council, the thought here is, you're, you're the duly elected representatives of all the people in town. You've gone through process to get to that elected status, and you've engaged people in your wards and the mayor, city at large, and so that is, is in the representative democratic tradition of, of this country. That all members should be residents of the city. There was a little bit of discussion, well, what if you live in rural, you have a DeKalb mailing address, but you live just outside of city limits, but your business has been in DeKalb for 40 years? I, I think that's something for you to address and wrestle with later on, a smaller point, but just something to keep in mind. And the idea, and, and this is something we had a lot of discussion at, at the Human Relations Commission, on the idea of, of the staggered two-year terms rather than four-year terms, and, and the purpose of that was to try to refresh the, the committee or commission, whatever you choose to call it, more regularly, so there can be more participation. And that, the board should look very much like DeKalb, so we, the emphasis is on striving for diversity. The meetings would all have to be public, subject to the Illinois Open Meetings Act. The board would, would meet no less than six times a year, and then as needed. Some things come up in unforeseen time, and it's important to be available and so forth. So what, what would be their purview to review a police investigation, so they would not be the point of the first initial investigation, as in, for instance, an officer-involved shooting? That there would be an investigation, but all of the materials, data, film, interview records and so forth that were taken by the police? Say we start with one, and, and it's, it should become fairly apparent to the thoughtful people who would be on this commission, whether are, we are following, whether we are hitting the regard that we hope we will find in this, in this department, in this city organization for equity and justice, to put it bluntly. And that citizen complaints against one police officer could be welcome to, to be brought before the, the commission as well. The findings of the board become a part of the city's public records, and as such will always remain, just as your minutes are, which you were talking about earlier. And as I said, the, the board would have access to all materials and evidence that were pertinent to a particular case, if it happened to be a case of, revolving around a particular incident. So finally, training. Our Human Relations Commission was very concerned that everybody who would serve on this would have some, some baseline of experience, because police officers wouldn't be serving on this, this commission. So how do you get that? And traditional ways are ride-along, sometimes participating in citizen police academy, where there are simulation machines and so forth. But I think we wanted to, they thought, and we think, we ought to go a little deeper. I mean, inviting people into the kinds of training. The de-escalation training, for instance, is mandated by the state of Illinois now, and has been since January of, of this year, and, and there have been follow-on laws that, so some, something that's manageable in terms of the time of the volunteers who'd be serving on the board, and it could be maybe pared down and so forth, but it would expose people to understand what it's like to be a police officer, but also understand what it's like to be a person who's, who's addressing a police officer in an urgent or exigent situation. So this is what's before you. It's presented for your review. And at this point, I'd like to defer to Chief Byrd, who had a few comments he wanted to add to.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, I was, we were tracking a storm, so.
No worries.
Looks like we dodged a bullet here in DeKalb, thank God. So there were, just to give you a little bit of update, there were at least six confirmed in DeKalb County, but did touch the DeKalb limits and city limits, so we were extremely lucky here. So, but in regard to the topic at hand, I think City Manager Nicholas has, has definitely explained the process and what we're looking at in regards to the citizens' review board. One of the most important parts, in, in my opinion, is that we have to make sure that we have impartial members on this board. And, you know, and, and I'm, I say that as the head of the police department. We embrace this at the police department. This is not something that we have an issue with. We want the transparency. That's what we want. I have all the faith in the world in my police officers. I know they do, they do a great job, they follow protocol, their integrity is intact, their moral character, their moral fiber is where it should be. So I have no concerns at all with the citizens' review board. However, I do expect them to have, as City Manager Nicholas spoke of, the training. It's important that they know what 1/100ths of a second actually feels like. Now, I could say that, but at the end of the day, they, they might get close to that speed, but the difference is, they will be able to walk out of that room, you know, but, you know, and, and they, they won't lose their life, they won't be injured in this training, and law enforcement officers can't say that. So the 1/100ths of a second that we deal with every night on, you know, in the streets is real time, there are real consequences. So that's the one thing, although we, we, we do want them to have a training, but I think it has to be noted, that even when you are trained and you have, and you have a good idea what the 1/1,000th of a second actually feels like, remember, you're still going to walk out of that room with your life. This past weekend, had a, a young lady from the Chicago Police Department who did not get that opportunity. She, she was tragically killed in a situation, and her partner was shot, and he's fighting for his life. So that just kind of tells you what I mean about, you know, it's a different, when you, when you think about, you know, the training compared to real time, real events happening, the consequences are extremely great for law enforcement. So I do expect that, that the, the members of this board have that training that they will need to at least understand what that feels like to a certain extent, and also, but having that understanding that it's training, and I'm going to walk out of here. So, you know, as City Manager Nicholas spoke of, the scenario-based training, we can make those as real as possible. I think that'll be extremely helpful for anyone on this board, going to training with our officers, maybe talking to some of our instructors, and asking questions, you know, explaining, well, why, why in this scenario was this type of force, you know, should, you know, probably be more used better than this one, or, or is this one more prudent, or, you know, should we do this? And I think those, those members that will be applied to this will have the opportunity to, you know, ask those kind of questions and get real answers, maybe not just from the instructors, but also from the police officers in those classes, you know, because at the end of the day, a lot of officers can speak out of experience and explain to them, you know, hey, you know, this situation occurred to me a year ago, and, you know, and this would occur, this is what, this is the actions I took on that certain situation, and help them get a better idea of what it is like to be a police officer on a daily basis. So, like I said, you know, I'll turn it back over to City Manager Nicholas, but as far as the DeKalb Police Department's concerned, we encourage this, we look forward to it. We just want to make sure that the training is, you know, in line with the training that we go through within the department, and it'll give them a real snapshot of what it is to be a, a police officer in, in this, in the world we live in today. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Anything else?
I just want to say that a lot of thought went into this. A lot of people had, had opinions about which way we might go. There are other models out there, and we thought this fit our community. We were aiming for something that fit the community, that, that is our focus day in and day out. And as, as the chief was saying, I, I think this is something we built, we could build on if we wanted to, but I think it's apropos now, so we offer it to you for your review and discussion.
Discussion, council. Yes, city, or, sorry, Alderman McAdams.
Yeah, so there's a lot of support for this idea out in the community. I've heard a lot of good things. I hear a lot of residents want this sort of program. They want the accountability that, and they want to be able to trust in their police department. So I urge my fellow council members to vote yes for this idea. Some people say it doesn't go far enough, but I think it's a great first start, and I think it's something that we should absolutely begin. We can always tweak it later. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Alderman Verbic.
Would you envision that this board be engaged in an active investigation, meaning there is some type of investigation going on? The civilian review board becomes part of this investigation, knowing personnel, who's involved, who's not? Or would they be more a part of after a case is closed?
It's closed. It says, yeah, it's a good question, and it says in your, very clearly, it's a closed point. And why is that? So there are a lot of professions that have this kind of approach, and they can go further than that because of egregious actions and activity of the people that are being reviewed. But this is what often happens in, in academe, and, and the medical professions, and, and hospital settings, and, and it's, you're, you're allowing it to start, and this is what our model is, for people who have unique training. By the way, we, we require now a college degree for our, our recruits. They go through, how many weeks? 14 weeks of?
14 weeks, sir.
Correct. And then another 14, and.
And the FTO program.
Yeah, so we are, we're allowing people who have had none of that training, none of that expectation, you know, didn't go through criminal justice classes and from, and then on up, and, and all the rest of that, to say, you know, I, you know, I'm a logical thinker, I'm, I'm thoughtful, I have a concern as a citizen in my community, and so I want to participate, I want to be, I want to learn why we do certain things. And, and if we see any inconsistencies, or even beyond that, if we see some things which we think don't align with our sense of justice and equity and participation, transparency and so forth. And so that's what we're serving up here. This is a chance for us to define if we feel we're on the right track or not. If we were to jump in otherwise, and if you were a police officer, or a family of a police officer, and you felt that, you know, and, and there were reasons to believe that you had done everything in a righteous fashion, and according to the book, and so forth, I, I think we would create lots of tensions that would not necessarily be, be productive and constructive. So we're starting here, and so in answer to your question, no, it's not at the front end of the investigation, the investigation is closed. Now let's take a look at this. And let's see. And, and by the way, everything that would be seen by investigators is seen now by a panel of civilians. And that's pretty extraordinary. Give us another example in this town where that happens. I, you know, and there are a lot of people that probably wouldn't like, I, you know, we don't critique fire, fire responses, we don't critique other things, and, and these are not elected people. These are people that are professional and go through curricula that's to train them to do the right thing. So we thought this was a good start.
Yes, sir. If, if I could just add to City Manager Nicholas's statement, I have a different perspective coming from the Illinois State Police. I have had the opportunity in 31 years to work with a lot of different police department, local police departments throughout my career. And I can tell you that the history here in DeKalb Police Department dictates that this is a good entry point for us to start at. There is no history here to dictate that this is nothing but a professional police department. The history says it. Now, I've been, I've been to police departments, I've worked with police departments where I would say that, you know, and, and I don't want to, you know, use names for that, because I know they, they're trying to improve and get better. But what I will say is that, you know, there are certain levels where those departments would dictate a more robust type review process. Maybe that it would require some investigative component, maybe some discipline component to it. But if you look at the history here, this is a professional police department, professional law enforcement officers that have been working here for years. So based on history, I think this is a good entry level review board to start at, and as City Manager Nicholas pointed out, this can always evolve. I mean, and I think that's the, the best part about this. We're building this out for the first time, and if, you know, if something or some situations dictate that this evolves, then we're prepared to do that as well. But I think you have to go on history, and at this point, I think it's the proper level to start at. And thank you.
Good. Yeah, noticing that case-closed point, but, you know, we see so many issues that can lead to other suits, civilly, or what, whatever the case may be. So I, I guess certainly we would have the utmost in confidence to the board, they would have to keep everything confidential and whatnot, but my concern would be that, that some of these cases go on for quite some time before things are, are closed. And, you know, what would be that, that involvement with board members or that liability if they become involved, knowledgeable about a, a part of the case? And if that could get out into the public, then what, I guess what would be the recourse?
Yeah, I, this is a good question. So, and we, we had an experience a year and a half ago, right? And without getting in detail, and we're not going to do that, but that took a while. There was an outside agency that did the investigation, and it went to the state's attorney, and there was due consideration there, and so months have passed, and people were wondering, what's, what's going to happen? What's the next best thing? And, and then there was, there were consequences. But there was no review. You know, the conversation never stopped, unfortunately, and it wasn't necessarily always constructive toward, well, what could we have done better? It was, some people were very disappointed, some people were, that's about right, and other people were in despair, or, or, so where, how do you, what do you do with that? And so what we're saying, well, this might be a way, so we peel back the onion, but for the first time, people will have a chance to actually see everything that was considered, everything. And that's as transparent as it gets, and, and you, and you put yourself there, you know, the old TV, you are there. And, and as the chief said, there is no, there is no way you can feel what it's really like to be there, but it's as close as you can get when you have the information in front of you. And you can peel it apart like you would if you're a. information in front of you, and you can peel it apart like you would if you're a historian or political scientist or something, and then you arrive at what you think is the reality, and then that becomes your reality, that's what you've done, you've done the homework, and so, as we've talked about this for months now, this is what we thought would be fair.
Thank you.
Alderman Faber.
Bruce, I just want to, I want to thank you for highlighting all the things that were done last year, and I know that, I know I had asked, I don't, you know, I had asked the HRC to compile a list of some other things, I don't know if they're still doing that or not, in terms of, I guess, from what the city's implemented to where, you know, our community was asking for additional information, but I like the recommendations of two years, I think that's a great idea, two-year terms. In terms of the training, I will say, when I first came on the council, Alderman Noriko and I attended a training session at the police station where they used a projection system to simulate, have different scenarios, and I've been in training, I've been in the military, was in the Navy, we did, we did some scenario training, I will tell you, that left a very lasting impression on me, to go through that training, it was very impactful. So, I, if we have the budget, if it's something you're considering, I think that's a great idea, you know, to introduce the council, the team members, the commission members to some of that training, because it, honestly, you know, you, you may think something, but until you're in that situation, it just looks a whole lot different. So it was very impactful, and I'm in support of this, certainly will make course corrections if they're needed, but I think what you guys have put together is fantastic, thank you very much.
Alderman Smith.
I guess I have a different perspective on this from the outside, but I agree with the chief, I have, this is, you know, excellent work, I think we've come a long way, and thank you for that very much. I have my, excuse me, my utmost confidence in you handling this situation. I, you know, one thing was training, and I agree with the other Alderman, and chief, thank you for that, that is extremely critical, gives you a total different outlook on how things happen on a day-to-day basis. I've gotten all my questions, I had a lot of them answered recently, mandatory training, you know, I guess one thing I'm concerned about is malicious complaints, you know, how are we going to handle that process? Meaning that, you know, is somebody going to pick up the phone and call, and now have we generated this whole bunch of activity, you know, that was a concern of mine. You know, I want to have people to understand that, and maybe I'm wrong, the board would have no authority over our outside agencies, ISP, Illinois State Police, of course, chief, bear with me as I go through this long list. You know, my concerns were with the progress, and actually, my, some of my concerns were with the victims in the case, because we are, the law enforcement is there for a reason, and there are victims in all these cases generally. So that was answered by the city manager, as far as the state's attorney being on board with this, which I greatly appreciate it, because we do have, we have to think of them as well, there's just, there is two sides, this chief will probably agree. So I've thrown a lot out there, chief, if you have any comments, I would appreciate it, sir, but you know what you're doing, so.
Yeah, so, and thank you, sir, Alderman, I appreciate that, and appreciate your support, every one of you, thank you for that. So you brought up a point that, myself and the city manager, we talked about this the other night, was that false narrative. So we have to be extremely careful when it comes to, you know, when we take these, you know, complaints and they end up being false. So what, you know, the officer can be slandered for the rest of his career by a false narrative. So that's something that's very important to me as well. I believe that there should be a component in the process that will, so that there will be consequences for a false report on an officer, a false narrative on an officer, because I think we know that even if it's cleared, the fact that they, that it was said, it was, it was, even though it might be false, could follow that officer for the rest of his career, despite being cleared completely by any wrongdoing. Then what I mean by that is that that, people will always give that officer a second look or double look, even though he never committed any of the infractions that were noted, it was a false narrative completely. So, I'm in belief, is what you're speaking of as well, is that I know, and I'll just speak back with my time with Illinois State Police, that when a complainant signed that affidavit, they said that this was a true statement, they admitted it to be a true statement, and there will be consequences if there was not, so the state police would, would, if they found out this was a false narrative, that it never happened, that it was untruth, there was untruth to this statement, they would make, they would actually make an arrest for making out a false police report. And I think that is important, that we have some concept of that. I know that we're taking complaints without, without them, you know, having to provide a, you know, a certified copy, a, you know, have it be notarized, so, which is fine, but we need some component on here that says, at least, that everything that you attest to is true and factual, and I think there needs to be some consequence for anyone who does something to the contrary of that, just to protect the officers, because we're scrutinizing the officers for everything they do in one one thousandth of a second. So you mean to tell me we're not going to scrutinize a complainant who took as much time as they needed to come up with a false narrative? So to me, something has to be in place to protect the officers when they're doing their job correctly, and someone falsely accuses them of something else. So that, I am totally in sync with you, Alderman, on that, because we did talk about that the other night. I don't know what that looks like, that's something that we can negotiate, and maybe the Senate Council, and, or maybe at the time when we do have the review board in place, maybe that's something that they will be able to build out, but I just, I want some protection, because these officers work tirelessly every day, tirelessly, they're, they put their lives on the line for the city of DeKalb on a nightly, daily basis, and when they're doing everything correct, I never would want someone to be able to send out a false narrative and slander their name for the rest of their career, excuse me, and their families, and, you know, I mean, this carries, excuse me, it carries to the family as well, so it's not just, it's the bird name, it's, you know, Chief Bird, but that will follow my family as well. So that's why we have to be at least in a place to protect them when there is, you know, a falsehood.
Well, I have a feeling that the board that we will select will be very, you know, they'll be very knowledgeable on that, I have a feeling that that is, you know, that will be their responsibility, I think they'll be able to detect that very well, you know, especially if they go through all the training that you will provide to them, they'll get a sense of, the feeling of what's going on. So I really appreciate, you know, all your work into this, you and the city manager and everyone involved, so thank you, and I am for this 100% sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, hearing none, definitely want to thank City Manager Nicholas for driving a lot of this as well, I know this is personally something that was important to you, so it's great to have it before council and hear the support that council has for this. Chief, all your input, helping us, I mean, we waited till we had you on board in order to make sure that this happened, and here we are, three months into your reign, and it's coming for council, so that's a testament to, we hired the right guy once again, so appreciate all your input on this. I agree with a lot of what council has said, I love the transparency conversation, especially City Manager Nicholas, when you were talking about, the conversation can continue after a case comes, is closed, this gives the opportunity for further discussion within our community, to address some of the concerns or questions that some might have had, that transparency piece I think is going to be just absolutely key. The training part, I agree with Alderman Faber, in fact, I remember when you went through that Alderman Faber, and just your description of it, and how, and hearing it secondhand, how impactful it was that I remember you talking about that, and going on ride-alongs multiple times myself, it really opens your eyes to what it is like out there, and I think it is going to be important for those board members to have that particular perspective, so that's just fantastic. And you're right, we can always update it, so this is just, it's a start, and we can adapt and change and modify over time as it suits the DeKalb community, so I am in full support of this, and really glad that we've got this before us, and I look forward to getting the citizen review board together and getting this in place. So, you're supposed to fill out a form to be able to speak, but.
No problem, ma'am, go ahead and come up to, you got to come up to the microphone,
you have three minutes, is how it works, but please introduce yourself, and go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank my friend Lynn for giving me this chance to get up.
Nice job, Lynn.
My name is Frankie DeChacho, I'm a member of the community, I wear a lot of different hats in this community, and among those hats, over the past couple of years, I've gotten to stand in front of the DeKalb Police Department, stand at the corner of Lincoln Highway and First, with some incredible activists and community leaders, and I know that many of the requests that those folks have shared with me are included in this. For the life of me, having reviewed this, however, I don't see present any form of accountability. I recognize the transparency element is critical, and I'm very grateful for that to be in it. If it were up to me, I would see a very meaningful reallocation of resources, far more than what this body has approved in the past year, but it's not up to me. So recognizing the issue at hand, the brief that I see in front of me, those issues of transparency, I'm grateful for them, I think they will go a long way. This idea of course correction in the future, I understand that, but this is also very much a question of momentum. Nationally, we have experienced momentum leading us to this moment, and my biggest fear is that we are squandering it on something that does not fundamentally shift oversight. Everything goes back to the chief. I have no reason to mistrust this chief, however, systemically, I do have a lot of misgivings about what we're dealing with, and so as far as the transparency aspect, obviously I'm grateful for it. Accountability wise, though, I don't see this board having any real power in the question. And it is really frightening that we might give the illusion of progress, and everyone will sit back, and then something will happen, and that's my fear. Thank you very much.
Really appreciate you coming out tonight and speaking before council, thank you for your input. Any other questions or comments? Oh, City Manager Nicholas.
Yeah, I just, I appreciate that you're coming out, and it's a bad night, and thank you for taking the time and saying that. So these are things that I've thought about my, you know, I'll just speak for myself here, and I realize the responsibility I have when I bring something like this forward, and I try to review things as various members of the public have identified them and so forth, but a couple of things are not as you represented them, and I'll just explain my view, if you don't mind. When you say there is, things will go back to the chief, actually, that's not true, right now, things will go to the chief, right? So now it goes to a panel of civilians who haven't, have, you know, I'm going to presume in the vetting, none of them are currently police officers, or formerly police officers, and I suspect that would, you know, they're really going to be coming in and trying to do an objective job. And so what we've done now is taking a professional, whatever the outcome of the investigation was, and running that potentially, that person's career, actions, and behavior through another process. And that requires a lot of faith, frankly, in the committee, and who they're going to be, and what their training is going to be, we've talked about that tonight, and it really puts, I would think it is a chastening and a sobering thought to people who are entering the profession, and that they're, currently, due process includes investigation by a third party, and then possibly, if there seems to be criminal activity, the potential for charges and adjudication and all the rest of that, and then beyond that, there's a possibility then that there will be civilian review of that. So that's why a lot of communities don't embrace this, and, but we are, and I think that's a lot of accountability, I mean, it's, city managers don't get that much accountability, oh, they get fired, but, you know, then they don't, and then they're gone. But here are people who are trying to make their homes in this community, or, you know, serve in a community, and it seems, it could seem, depending on what the circumstances were, that it never ends. So, and that's something we're very, I was very mindful of, and I think at this point, in our experience, that's pushing the envelope rather than falling safely within the envelope, and I think there will be, and I don't think with the attention that the council's giving this, that I've given, that the chief is, that our FOP is giving this, that we need worry in, for the moment anyway, and with the recruits we're bringing in, that there isn't going to be accountability, and that's my view from the inside looking out, so. I guess, you know, time will tell, and you'll have to form your opinion as you see what happens, and, you know, training is ever more important, it's never been as important as it is now, in the profession, and in our code of conduct, and by state law, so I think that also is a path to accountability that probably 10, even 10 years ago, even five years ago, we didn't have.
Thank you, City Manager. Alderman Perkins.
But I do have a clarifying point then, so then reading through this, the group of the group is going to be charged more so with data collection than making any recommendations on a specific incident.
No, actually, all the data's been collected, I mean, they're going, they could ask for more information, they could bring people back for interviews and so forth, but the whole of the investigation, all the data, all the video, it's all presented to them, now what do you think? And so their opinion will ride with you, and you'll decide in public discourse, in the eye of the public, whether you feel there needs to be change in the protocols, as one example, in the training, in the way we vet the hiring that we do for the department, it could be any of those directions, or all of them together, and that's the scrutiny and the accountability I think applies there.
But I guess to the accountability point, though, it just reads like there's data collection that's going on, is the committee going to be providing recommendations?
Yes, yeah, yeah, and it says that in the background, yeah, absolutely, I mean, I didn't notice it in there. Otherwise, you're just saying, hey, how was our book report?
Right, exactly.
No, it's, what are your recommendations? And they might say, we don't recommend any policy changes, we represent better training on X, Y, Z, we recommend that, that we try harder to bring in recruits, persons of color, people who represent the look of our town.
And I missed the recommendations piece, because looking through it, you know, just, and this just goes to the accountability point that you raised, if you look at the authority point, you know, the first, in subsection A, 2A, to review, and then below that is to receive.
Well, if you look under B, or under A, the second note, it says, you know, make recommendations to the chief for investigation reconciliation, make quarterly reports, which would be to the council, make direct appeals to the council, hey, we got to do something different here. You have a structure in your department which is not fostering leadership and progressive thinking.
And then item C says it comes before council, and then we can take that information and figure out if there's something that we want to do with it going forward, is my understanding.
That's correct.
Good.
Alderman Larson.
And I think what you brought up, we had talked earlier about picking these five people. The five people have to reflect DeKalb, but all of us have to trust them, whether we're on the police force, whether we're residents, whether we're people that are more victims, or maybe on the wrong side of the police, or feel that we haven't been treated fairly by the police, those five people have to have the trust of all those different groups, and that's going to be a tall order to come up with those five, not impossible, but that's, to me, the vetting really has to get, that everybody looks at the transparency as being the truth, and that's what those five people. And that's what those five people have to bring to the table. And that's why I think though, there's five people in DeKalb that we can find. I really do.
For sure.
And I think this will be successful if we find those five people.
I, ma'am, one last thing, ma'am.
Absolutely.
So, first time in some time, we, we need to fill holes in the police force, our, our police force in terms of retirements and people moving on, trying another career and so forth. And we were down some 10, just, just from the, the mark where we were at the beginning of the year. And so we've, we've had six recruits finally vetted backgrounds and went off to the academy in the last 10 days to two weeks, chief. The chief addressed all of them and, and I think maybe for the first time, and what he said was, we, we ask, we're going to ask a lot of you. And we didn't run through this with all of them, they, they're, you know, they're thinking about a lot of things and going off, but their families are there. And the chief said, you know, what we're asking is that you need to be basically perfect. Now, nobody's perfect, but you basically need to be perfect. You need to be accountable for everything you do from this point forward after they were sworn. And you have to do this in the eyes of the people you serve, in the eyes of persons who, and here's where the word comes in, who have never, ever put on a badge, you know, never gone through the train, none of that, and they can render recommendations in this case that can affect the rest of your career. And chief was talking about false accusations and so forth, but it doesn't have to be that. It can just be, just playing the name again and again and again in, 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 in well-covered reports of whatever the proceedings of the, of the commission are, so, or the board. So they have to be prepared for that. This is a public life they're buying into. They are never not a police officer, ever, ever. On a camping trip, wherever they are, they can't, you know, they have, that's what they have to be. So that's the oath they're taking now, now in years past. And, and, you know, I defer to Alderman Smith, who, who went through this at a different time. And, but it's, it's, there's a lot of pressure. So what we're saying is, based on what we see now, we feel this is a fair start. If we find that it's not, over time, you have all the power in the world to change it. It will come back to you in a couple of weeks in an ordinance form, we're going to have more discussion, first reading, second reading, whatever. But I think now, we need to go from just a very conceptual outline to what's it look like, you know, in three or four pages that will be ultimately in the municipal code, like the Human Relations Commission and like the Planning Committee, what are all of your boards and commissions.
Alderman Morris. So we're just, we're reviewing the Citizens Review Board, just having the discussion we talked about the last 30 minutes. I didn't know, I know Alderman Verbic has this comment too, I didn't know if you had anything.
No, I just was waiting for the all-clear, didn't want to leave the children alone.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate being able to make it out. Alderman Verbic.
Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us and bringing up this notion of accountability. So what we're saying then, at the end of the day, is city council is accountable for the, the review board, their performance, whatever the case may be, that, that, that is being, I guess, work that we are conducting. So what type of measures will we be looking for? In other words, that we're making progress as far as being accountable to our citizenry. That's what I would ask each of us to think about. So if they're, they're truly reporting to us and accountable to us and we need to make a, a difference in our community, what does that look like? What, what are those expectations that, that we look for?
Thank you. Any other discussion? So you've reviewed, let's come back to us, yeah, like you said, first, second reading, we'll make all the modifications. That'll take place over September-ish, maybe go a little longer, but...
You're about to engage in some pretty detailed financial planning.
Yeah.
And so I suspect we'll bring this back either at the second meeting in August or the first meeting in September.
Okay.
We need some time to throw it together.
And I think you've heard we're all in support of this, so marching orders are, yeah, go forward and let's, let's get this closed. All right. All right, moving on to agenda item J, Resolutions. We have Resolution 2021-065, authorizing the award of a construction services contract to manneval construction in the amount of $155,257.93 for the construction of a new shared-use path along Fairview Drive with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total not to exceed $160,000. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last regular meeting, the council approved engineering services for the design of this particular path and two others. And so now this one comes back, I'm happy that Zach Gil is pushing this along, our city engineer, this is for the actual construction, manneval construction, they had the low bid. And also, we asked for a 3% contingency just because we're, we're working on the shoulder and, you know, we, we want it to hold up, whatever we're going to do if we find some problems soils. That way, we don't have to come back to you. And we're getting to that time now where, you know, we got about a month of really good dry weather yet and then, you know, don't know what happens after late September.
Council, questions, discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Ada.
Resolution passes. All right, item number two, Resolution 2021-066, authorizing the award of a construction services contract to William Charles Construction in the amount of $994,772.30 for Afton Road Construction with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total not to exceed $1,094,000. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas.
And thank you, and I want to thank Zach Gil, also CES Engineering, for doing a lot of the work to get us to this point. This is the new road, the new rural design road that replaces that north leg of Kriego that was a, a part of what is now, happy to say, the Facebook development site. And the, it's a brand-new road and going through some cornfields and the soil there's never had to bear that, that weight and we're not sure what we're going to get, so we asked for a little higher contingency here, just because there's also, there have been over the years, some drainage problems. We want to make sure that the farmers whose fields back up to that new road going north and south, they're not going to have a dislocation of their tiles, a dislocation of the natural paths of the drainage from, from that zone. The bids were, for this time of year, not bad and we, we think the low bid, William Charles is a responsible bid and we recommend your approval.
Council, discussion, questions? Hearing none, roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Ada.
Resolution passes. All right, moving on to item number three, Resolution 2021-067, authorizing a standard agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation, Division of Aeronautics, IDOT-DOA, for construction services with Crawford, Murphy and Tilly Incorporated, CMT, for design, special services and construction phase engineering for the milling and overlay of Taxway C at the DeKalb-Taylor Municipal Airport titled Project DKB-4875. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you. Crawford, Murphy and Tilly have been consulting engineers working on projects at the airport for over 20 years. This has to do with the services they would provide for the, the design and also the construction phase engineering of the very important overlay that we've been working toward. It's been on our tip plan with the federal government for almost a decade and this is for Taxway C to replace. And we, we recommend the contract with CMT so we can proceed and light a fire under this for the rest of the year.
Comments, questions, council?
It's in the back, I'll add, the, the federal government is picking at the local and state share as well, so it's 100% funded by the local.
Very good, very good deal.
Yeah, we always like those.
When are they going to start, Bill? This year?
Yes.
Fair enough.
Monday, right?
Monday. You were smoking 30 drag strips.
Seeing and hearing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Ada.
Resolution passes. All right, now for the gentleman in the back, we're finally there. All right, Resolution 2021-068, approving a package liquor license for DNT Swami Group 01 LLC, doing business as DeKalb Liquor Mart on 1352 East Dresser Road. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the background speaks for itself, I think. We have a prospective owner of, of a new licensed liquor establishment and they need local support to get their state license. There still is a life safety inspection they'll have to go through, which is provided by, by our city organization, but this is the way we, the process we normally follow. This particular package liquor license would begin on, normally it begins on January 1st and goes through the year, but in this case, we're sort of mid-year, so there's a pro-rata adjustment. And we support it. We're happy to see that long vacant building heading toward reuse.
Yes.
I remember it because as a kid, it was a liquor store back then, always been. Questions or comments, council? Hearing none, roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Ada.
Resolution passes. All right, gentlemen, it is no problem if you wanted to get up and leave, you don't need to stick around the rest of the meeting. Yeah, have a great night, thank you. All right, item number five, Resolution 2021-069, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with the Fire Protection District for fire suppression and paramedic ambulances services from May 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2031. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second? Yes, okay, thank you. Alderman Verbic moved and Alderman Favor seconded. City Manager Nicholas.
Fire Chief McMaster and I have had conversations with the DeKalb Fire Protection District now for some months. They're in an interesting position as we have expanded, their, their geography for the district has, has diminished. Also, in rural area, usually when, when we levy taxes and they fall on our residents, they, we, we usually get the taxes that we levy. In their case, they only got a little bit over 80% last year. Some places just are no longer operating in rural areas, so. And it just happened, their, their, their contract has expired and we thought this is a good time to try to establish a system that would sustain them over the next 10 years and, and we'll see how that all goes. And so you see, there's a chart here, which is also in the attached contract, which refers to what their annual contract fee is to come to us for the services we provide. In addition, we're able to charge for the, the usual ambulance user fee for the residents living in, within the district as if they were living within the city limits. So we feel we'll be reimbursed. We're not, we're not recommending at this time substituting ourselves as the agency that handles the business of providing ambulance service. Well, we do provide the service, but of, of doing the financial part and, and the organization. So the, the board of the Fire Protection District voted in favor of this and we bring it to you with our hearty recommendation.
Discussion, Alderman Favor.
Because I don't know, or I don't remember. So in the back, it says they're a taxing body, so is participation by the rural community mandatory? It's part of their tax bill or is there an option to opt out?
You can't opt out. Somebody has to pay for the service and we can't provide it. We, we provide it, but I mean, we, we, the city organization, do not extend into that area outside of our corporate limits. So it's, it's always been, there's been mutual interest and overlapping responsibility. It's a partnership and our, our firefighter paramedics go out into the district every day, nearly every day, so. And they're happy with our service. This is, this is a, this is a matter of the business of it all and how can they continue to operate going into the future, so.
Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Ada.
Resolution passes. Agenda item K, ordinances, second reading, we have none tonight, so moving on to agenda item L, ordinances, first reading. Ordinance number, item number one, ordinance 2021-030, approving easement agreements with Goldframe LLC for water utility easement and a temporary grading easement for the Facebook development. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As the background explains, we've, we've got a couple of different kinds of easements here. We have a temporary grading easement which surrounds the, the imminent, hopefully, construction of the traffic signals at 23 and Gerler and, and obviously, Facebook is an adjacent property owner, needs to provide some easement so we can put construction equipment and stack some materials and so forth outside of the area that is, is being constructed. And also, there's a water utility easement which provides us the opportunity over time, now it's not a temporary easement, to enter the easement if we need to, to repair piping that may fail. And it gives, it's a mutual responsibility. They, they, they give us this option and we'll respect their, the integrity of their, their property, their fence line and so forth. So this is pretty common, utilities, where utility have easements and we are seeking those in these cases, one a temporary, one a longstanding easement. And Facebook, through different layers of review, has approved what's been drafted by the legal department and we recommend your approval. Now, we're recommending this on first and second tonight for the reason that without the temporary grading easement, we can't proceed with the intersection signalization and we're running out of time, you know, we've been waiting, 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 now we got the green light from above and not Facebook, I'm talking about the other layers of government. And we're ready to go, so we're chomping at the bit.
Council, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Ada.
The ordinance on first reading passes, now I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Smith. Discussion? Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Ada.
The ordinance on second reading passes. All right, agenda item M, Reports and Communications. Council member reports. I'll start with you, Alderwoman Morris.
No report.
Alderwoman Larson?
I'm gonna, kind of go to the new movie that's out with Aretha Franklin. And I think all of us in town, just keep that word, respect. And there's no limit to where we can go.
Alderman Smith?
On August 3rd, I had the pleasure of attending a meeting hosted by Community, DeKalb County Community Foundation on the Pleasant Street neighborhood. Joanne Rouse was also there. So very productive, and I think they're getting back together as a group and have now found some meeting spaces with one of the local churches. And Chief, I'll reach out to you later about some of that, but that's it.
Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderman McAdams?
No report.
Alderman Verbic?
School starts next week. Everyone, please watch out for all the little ones out there. Great to see them back out there after not seeing them out there last year. So that's all.
Alderman Favor?
Yeah, I was gonna give kudos to our inspection department, to Dawn and Frank. I, I've had a couple of calls over, over the summer with some properties that weren't being maintained. And each time that I've contacted them, I've, I've been happily surprised to see that they've already got the wheels in motion. They've already, have started working with the, the owners of the properties. And so I just want to, you know, just give a shout out to them and say thank you. And then this week, Friday is second, the second Friday, so I think it's downtown with the Chamber. Second Friday, come on down. Spend some time downtown on Friday evening.
Awesome. Just wanted to reiterate, we all need to get vaccinated. You know, I know there's a lot of different opinions that are out there. And I, I do respect people's opinions, but when it comes to this situation, you know, if you think you're healthy and you think you're going to be okay and you're going to survive it, that's great. But don't forget that you contracted and you walk by people that may not be as fortunate. If we're all vaccinated, there's a high probability that we can just end this thing and move to no masks and have all of our freedoms back again. So I just want to encourage everyone out there, please go get vaccinated as soon as possible. Think of everyone around you, think of us, and think of DeKalb as a whole. I also wanted to say, I went out, so there was a Veterans Weekend last weekend. I was with Alderman Favor. That was a really cool event. There must have been 100 motorcycles. There was a ton. And we went to, what, Barb City Manor, Oak Crest, Pine Acres, out by the county, on Eniglen, I can't remember the name of it, Heritage Hills, maybe? And just had an event honoring the veterans that were there. And it was great.